Good afternoon, welcome to City Council Meeting for September 13th, 2022. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I will call the meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, can we have confirmation of the agenda posting in the roll call?
Yes, thank you. The agenda was posted in accordance with open meeting law and we have Councilmember Sheri Jorgensen absent from the meeting.
Thank you. Is Minister Allen present for the invocation? Well, if you'll all rise then, we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we'll proceed then to public announcements. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce our new Public Works Director, Jamie Carreri. He comes to us from Hemlock Farms Community Association in Lords Valley, Pennsylvania, one of the largest private communities of over 10,000 residents. So he's here with us. Today was day two. He came back, so that's exciting. And Jamie, do you have anything that you'd like to share?
First of all, I'm very thankful to be here. Boulder City from day one, from the interview process and everything, everybody's been fantastic. Taylor and our management team are so warming. Everybody's been welcoming and I know it's day two, but in all honesty, I'm very happy to be here, so thank you.
Thank you and welcome aboard. You know, I know you and I had a chance to chat just a little bit yesterday. Lots of stuff going on. Public Works will be heavily involved in all that, so thank you for coming and I think you'll enjoy Boulder City.
Yeah, and I'm very excited about all the projects that we got going on, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, were there any other public announcements?
That was it.
Thank you. We'll go to our initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment will have up to five minutes. Comments must be related to an item for action on the agenda. We will proceed with people who are present and then take any phone calls and any emails following that. As always, we do ask people to be civil and concise in their comments. Anyone present that would like to speak during public comment? If you'd please state your name and there should be a sign-in sheet there if you could print your name.
Hello, I'm Rachel Hunt. I'm the Chair of the Boulder City Library Board of Trustees.
Hi, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Kimberly Dean, the Director of Boulder City Library. Rachel and I just wanted to pop in tonight and give our support for the bill introduction, Bill Number 1920, that considers the transfer of land at 651 Adams Boulevard to the library. And having that land will be very important for our future community growth. And although we're unsure today exactly what that growth might look like, we know that having the space and being able to have the space to grow would be a huge start, so thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Again, if you'd state your name and print your name on the sheet there.
Okay, yeah, my name is Chris Diley. I printed on here earlier, but I think the non-agenda items will be, public comment is at the end?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll wait till then. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will take anyone wishing to call in. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is the initial public comment period for the City Council Meeting. The phone number, 702-589-9629. Anyone wishing to call in for the initial public comment period? The phone line is available, the number 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for public comment?
Not for the first portion.
Thank you. Hearing no others then, we will close the initial public comment period. Move for approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Councilmembers, any changes for the regular agenda?
No changes.
Do we have a motion then for approval?
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? For the consent agenda, again, Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
All right, anyone wishing to make a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Bring us to item number six then, a presentation from the Fire Chief. Mr. City Manager, did you want to introduce this item?
Sure, so tonight, Chief Gray will be providing the department's annual report and he has several people from the department here with him and I'll turn it over to him to take it away.
Thanks, Taylor. Mayor and Council, happy to be here. Tonight, I'm joined by my Deputy Chief, Greg Chester, our Training Officer, Captain Nigel Walton, and Sarah Mitri, who's our Fire Analyst. She does a lot of our data analysis and runs the EMS program. So I've just got a few slides we go through and I'll just talk about this year's accomplishments and performances and have some questions at the end if you have any, I'm available. So again, we'll briefly talk about just the COVID pandemic wrap-up, which really was what last year was for us, thankfully. Talk about our total calls for service and dig down there a little bit. Talk about some training improvements we've made, our reserve program, our accreditation, which is a really important thing to us and we're right in the middle of. And talk about some response improvements and community risk reduction efforts we're doing. So to start with, obviously, we offer fire, EMS, and technical rescue and hazmat. Typically, on a normal year, we see about a dozen structured fires. The first year I was here, we didn't have any, which was shocking, but this last year we had seven. We had more fires inside of a house, but it's not considered a structure fire unless the actual house is on fire. So sometimes you might see more fire trucks in front of a house, but that's what it is. It's a trash can in a house or a bed in a house. It's not actually the house on fire. The other main fire that we see is auto fires. We tend to see a few semi-fires each year and then lots of car fires, especially on I-11. It seems like where those hills are in the summer when it's hot, those trucks overheat. So our medical calls, they make up 74% of our overall call volume, which is about on par with the country. They're around 70%. We're a little bit more medical. We ran 1,977 EMS responses in fiscal year '22, and that included three mass casualty incidents. And those are defined as any incident with four or more patients. And so we tend to see those on US-95, especially around the Dry Lake Bed. The car accidents there tend to be pretty bad. Technical rescue, in our city, technical rescues are really limited to auto extrication and rope rescues. We do a little bit of search. We're just starting. We've had someone lost up behind Cascada and we work along Metro to find them, but for the most part, that's the two things we're focused on. And primarily, ours are really auto extrications. So in fiscal year '22, we had 20 of those. We also had 13 hazmat calls. I'm sorry, yeah, 13 hazmat calls and three aircraft calls. So we have noticed in the last two years, we've had a lot more aircraft activity and aircraft accidents, although most of the aircraft accidents are happening out in the desert part of the city, not actually on the airport. And then the remaining calls, and they tend to be a lot, I think in this last year, we had 624 other calls for service. And that's people needing assistance up, get into their house, cops need assistance, false alarms, all those things. Anything that doesn't fall in those top four categories just becomes another call. And we have the ability to dig down further, but a lot of times, it's just they're non-emergent calls, and so we don't spend a lot of time on that. The one thing that the data did show us is that from last year to this year, we saw a 21% increase in our EMS calls, but we think COVID really affected that. If you look at the five-year average, it was about a 7% increase. Our overall call increase from '21 to '22 was 25%, but again, on the five-year comparison, it's about 16% per year. So still a significant increase, but not crazy. So the next thing is our calls by year. And prior to my arrival, they really just documented EMS calls, medical calls, and then everything else, they just called fire. So you'll see as we go along each year, we're starting to break them out a little bit more. And so this last year, you can see the trend in how they've been broken down. On our emergency response, we track our response times. We talk about that. We talk about our dispatch and our turnout time. Those are the two things we have control over. And so our dispatch standard is 1 minute 20 seconds and our turnout time standard is 1 minute 30 seconds. And so these are important for us. We've been trying to focus on ways to improve them. With dispatch, let's see here. The slowest calls of the year were 4 minutes and 16 seconds. Again, we're supposed to be at 1:20. We've seen them get down as low as 2:56, so we're making some improvements to try to speed things up a little bit. One of the things we do is the Deputy Chief runs our data every month. That's the same data that you get, but that email goes to dispatch, it goes to the Police Department, goes to the firefighters, so that everybody can see what they're doing and we can start talking back and forth about, hey, you're a little bit slower, you need to go a little faster. We've also got ARPA funding approved for a station alerting system, which is going to allow us to, once dispatch gets the location and the nature, they can push a button and the computer will dispatch us and she can continue to ask questions. So that'll allow the dispatch time and the turnout time to overlap, which should reduce our response time, which is a big deal. It's also got some other benefits, like when it wakes you up in the station at night, instead of waking you up till bullhorn, it ramps the tones up and gradually wakes you up, so you don't have cardiac issues. You think, that's serious? I mean, it is, we laugh, but it had the heck scared out of me a lot of times in my life, you know? So now, so we are working on that. The one big thing that continues to be the issue with dispatch, and we're working with the Police Department on it, is staffing. On most times, they have one dispatcher in there. And so if a structured fire call comes in, a 911 call, they get a dozen 911 calls. They also have to dispatch all the fire trucks. They have to call Henderson to ask for more fire trucks. They have to talk to the police officers and continue to answer the phone calls. And so they have to decide what they're going to do. And what ends up happening is things get left off. And it's typically, unfortunately, it's not the callers, it's us, and so things that we need are not getting done. So again, we're trying to find solutions to improve some of that. I will say that we've seen on our turnout time, when the year started, there were about 2 minutes and 12 seconds to get out the door. By the end of the fiscal year, they're at 1 minute 11 seconds. So they're actually performing better than the goal, so that's really good improvement. But again, that's a lot of emails and a lot of conversations, hey, how can you speed up at night? How can you move quicker? So on the response time goals, we break them out really in four different categories. So urban one is the area that we can respond to from Station 121 in four minutes travel time. So that's going to be, the areas right around there. Urban two is the rest of the city, proper, where the people live. And so that's why you see two different response time goals. And our goal is eventually to get to the same standard for the whole city, but it's important in our accreditation model that we communicate what we can really do, so we don't promise somebody over on keys, we can be there in 6 minutes and 50 seconds when we can never do that. So that's why you see the big difference there. And then rural is defined as anything out between the population and I-11, so really the dump and all the open desert there. And then the outlying remote area is that area that goes from the other side of I-11 all the way up to, I think, mile marker 34. And so you won't see a time there, and it's because it's hard to set a goal where we can be there between eight minutes and 25 minutes. And so typically in the models, if it's outlying and remote, people just realize where they're at, and so we don't put a time in there. And then that second set of times where it says ERF, that's the effective response force. So that's how long it takes to get all the help we need. So if we have a medical call, we need five, we have five. If we have a structured fire and we need 15, we have seven. We got to wait for two trucks from Henderson to get the other eight people. So whenever they get on scene, that's when, at 14 minutes and 50 seconds, that's what we're saying, we believe we can be there in 14 minutes and 50 seconds. And so that's some of the tracking that we do. And then I want to just talk briefly. We've had a few structured fires and after the fires were over, social media was kind of abuzz and some of the questions were, why do we need Henderson to come help? And other ones were, why do the firefighters just stand around until Henderson gets there? So I wanted to talk about that a little bit. And the Wyoming Fire is a great example. So if you remember the Wyoming Fire, it was on a really windy day, and so wind-driven fires are really dangerous fires any day. That day in particular, both rescues were on transports, which we've talked about that could happen. So they were both on transports, so we had three people in the station. So the three firefighters responded to two houses on fire is what they got to. Henderson would typically start 31 people to that fire, only because there's a bunch of critical tasks that have to be done. So while it didn't look like the firefighters were putting the fire out right away, is they've got things that they have to do before they can get near them to make sure that they don't get killed, you know, which includes they have to do a 360, they have to walk around the building and see if there's any other hazards. And that's critical, because like some of the houses over on the lakeside, on the roadside, there are one story, and on the backside, there are three stories. And if they don't see that, they won't know what they really have. Same with fire conditions. Sometimes what's on the front, the smoke, is nothing like the back, and so it's real important to see the whole picture. They have to do that. They have to shut off utilities. They have to get a water supply. And so mind you, they're doing this with three guys. On this particular fire, our normal inch-and-three-quarter hand lines, fire hoses, won't work on that because it's too much heat. So they got to pull out the big two-and-a-half-inch lines to put 325 gallons a minute from each hose. Well, those typically take two or three guys. So we were able to still get them pulled out and deployed and fix them in a way where one can sit on them and we can get another one, but again, that takes time. And so it wasn't that they weren't working at all. In fact, they were working way harder than they should have been to get it going. Now, the fire, once our partners got from Henderson, we were able to break up, Boulder City basically took one house, Henderson took the other, and we were able to keep it from going to the third house. So that was, in my opinion, it was a successful fight. If we'd have had 100 people sitting in town and when that fire hit, we'd have probably lost the first house. It's just, it was going too fast and too hard when we got there. We were seeing spot fires 100 feet away, over by Bethany Baptist in the yard, which is really rare that you have spot fires coming off a house fire. And then the other thing they were talking about is the mutual aid. Mutual aid is used across the nation. It's a normal practice. We provide mutual aid for Clark County all the time. So Clark County rarely will run to Searchlight or they won't go to Nelson, they don't go to the Hoover Dam Lodge, they just call us. You know, National Park calls us for mutual aid. Hoover Dam, they don't have any ambulances, so that's who does it. So we provide mutual aid for some. Henderson provides a ton of mutual aid for us, so it's a normal practice. In Chicago area, where Councilman Bridges is from, there's, MABUS is a system in place. There's 1,100 fire departments in their mutual aid system. And they can push a button and fire trucks come from everywhere. It's just the way they do business, so it's definitely not, it's not a bad thing, so. Regarding training, we continue to make a lot of changes in training. Each year, our firefighters are required to do a minimum of 25 hours a month to get their annual training requirement met. So they did a total of 12,973 hours, and that's between the career, the reserves, and the cadets. The career alone did 8,169, so that's out of 22 people did that much themselves. So it's a pretty impressive number of training, so they spend a lot of time when they're not on calls. You know, I know the joke is that they're watching TV or they're popping popcorn, but the reality is they're doing EMS training or hazmat training or technical rescue training and it just goes on and on. Hazmat technician training has been ongoing. We were able to get eight technicians through last year. It looks like this year, we'll be able to get 11 through. The actual training, the travel and all that is covered by the federal government, so it's free 100% for the city. The backfill part is what we usually pay for, the overtime when they're not here. The state has a grant out now and they're going to pay for some of those positions for us. They've guaranteed us three. We think we might be able to get a few more, to where it would have zero cost to the city. And so we'll be able to get our hazmat technician level training up and running, so that'll be a big plus for the city. When we did our risk assessment, we identified a lot of hazardous chemicals out in some of our industries and especially out of the solar field that now we'll have the capability to be able to manage if we have it, so. Rope rescue training is something we're doing new. With the rocks, with the zip line potentially coming back into business, we need to have some element of rope rescue. Bootleg Canyon, we've had a lot of rescues. A lot of it's low-angle rescue, but it still involves ropes, getting people off those rocks. And so we've got two people that were sent away and got technician level training. We're going to train the entire department as operation level, which is a level down, and on each shift, we're just going to have two technicians. We don't need the whole team to be technicians, we just need two. So that's another way to be a little bit more fiscally responsible and still be able to deliver service. A lot of these incidents, we're still going to need Henderson. I mean, it's just because they're so complexed and we have so much equipment, we just don't have it, so we'll work together on those. Fortunately, the technical rescue ones are pretty rare. And I believe Deputy Chief Chester and Captain Walton have been meeting with Hoover Dam and those individuals out there on potentially having a regional response out there too if they have a rope-related incident. So right now, again, they don't have, they have some old rope, they don't really have a process. The process is call Henderson, call Boulder City, call Las Vegas, and that's their plan, so we'll do our best to work with them. Reserve training, they're required to do four hours a month to keep their skills up. Cadet training, we have an academy going right now. They're required to do 256 hours to get their initial training, and they do that on Saturdays for 12-hour sessions, and then they have to do a series of ride-alongs. The nice thing is our cadet program, after I got here, we moved it from being a paid program to a volunteer program. Once they graduate, then it becomes a reserve program when they're paid, so they have to have some skin in the game and we don't have to pay them to teach them. So it's kind of working out better. And then regional training is something we've been focusing on. In August, Boulder City PD and Boulder City Fire worked on some active assailant training at the school. We've been working for about six or eight months on the paperwork part of it. We actually did some hands-on. And the plan is to do another one of those in the fall and bring in Henderson PD and Henderson Fire and Lake Mead Rangers to be able to have a little bit smoother process. But we learned a lot. It was a good, I think it was a good experience. It's always good when the different agencies get together. If for no other reason, we run calls together all day, so the more familiar we are with each other, the smoother it goes, so. So our reserve program, when I did the slide, we had 11. We have eight today. We had, the academy started with nine. We had six when I built the slide. We have five today, so, and we have two reserve battalion chiefs. The reserves, we're trying to get them back to 20, 20 to 24. It's just, we've had them to 18 in my time here, and as soon as we started to feel like we've got the right number, Henderson or Las Vegas takes them or Clark County, and there's nothing we can do about it. So the one we're going to lose in the academy now, it has a chief's interview in two weeks, and we were notified yesterday, one of our current reserves just got hired by Las Vegas. And so I'm happy for them, just sad for us because we lose good people, so. And obviously, just talking about some of the benefits, they continue to help us when we have them, to help keep our overtime down. They actually help us with better quality of training. We had some training opportunities that we're able to bring them in to backfill some of our career guys. They can go out and do the training for free almost and come back. When we have them, when we don't have them, then it's all overtime, so it saves us a lot of money. And then occasionally, we have an extra reserve, you know, they'll come in because they've got to get their minimum two shifts, and so we'll have an eighth person on the rig one day, which is always a bonus. So the community risk reduction, this is another area that we've really started to ramp up, especially with the COVID dying down. Our fire inspections, there's about 450 brick-and-mortar businesses. Our goal is to get into 450 of those a year. Last year, we got into 316, and again, it was, not all businesses were open, some people had issues with hours, and so that will improve. Community classes, we're still offering the community CPR and first aid, stop the bleed and babysitting courses. In fact, I think there was a babysitting course last weekend and it was eight students in that class, so that's a good class. And this is something that we're really proud of. It was approved just now on the consent agenda, but our business community CPR and AED program, which was funded by the council, which is huge, if we can get this up and running effectively, we'll be one of the only fire departments in the country or cities in the country doing this. And I think this will save lives. It might take a year or two, but this will save lives. 19% of cardiac arrests happen in the public. And so to have cardiac monitors all up and down our public areas, that will save a life at some time. I know we've got business leaders like Councilmember Fox that are going to make it mandatory for all of his employees to go through our classes. The classes are free. We're happily to provide, happy to provide them for them. We've got 25, 20, 25 people already committed that says they want them, so now that this passed on consent, hopefully next week, we'll start delivering AEDs, so we'll be able to start seeing them in businesses right away. So that's really nice. And then we found an app called Pulse Point that we can enter every AED in the city into it. And so it's a free app, anybody can download it. Anytime you, out and about and curious, you can open up it and it shows the city, it'll show where every AED is. So the ones we put in, plus all the ones in the city, are going to be in that system. So it's a nice thing. One last thing that we're going to do that we think's important, and it actually came from advice from someone else, is we're going to see if we can work with the high school to potentially offer CPR and babysitting classes and first aid classes through their health program. So see if they'll let us come in as one of the days on their health class and teach CPR. So at one point, we could have all the high school seniors have CPR and continue to work there. That'll serve two purposes. One, we'll have more people that can do CPR, but hopefully, it'll be like a farm team. We can start reaching out to some of our local kids and talk about what we do and hopefully get some of them interested, so they give us a shot before they go somewhere else, so. Fire Station 122, July 12th, council approved the funding for it. We're at the early stages. In fact, I just talked with the city engineer this evening and he said he's got some sketches for us to look at. Once the sketches are kind of what we're looking for, then it goes into a two-step RFP program. The first step is to find a design-build company, and then they'll actually design the actual building. So we're hoping to be able to get that back to council by the end of the year to look at the plans and for formal approval for the design. Again, we're really trying to make sure we build it to look like a house in the area. The only real difference, it'll have a bigger parking lot and two RV garages instead of one, so I think it'll be received well. It's definitely going to, we've talked about our response times on the east side of the city and the lakeside is going to be way better. Initial staffing, looks like it's going to be, take one of the rescues from Station 121 and move them over there, so that'll be two people. Our goal would be to eventually get it to three, and that way, we can have a fire engine and an ambulance, and they can serve as a multi-use company. So if it's a medical call, they'll take the ambulance. If it's a fire, they'll take the fire engine, and so that makes us a lot better equipped on that side of town. We're hoping, we've got our fingers crossed. I talked to an architect. He said if we got everything approved and ground broken in January, we could be done in six months. So that's what we're hoping for June, but it's construction, so we're not going to be upset if we don't get that. And then fire accreditation, like I talked to earlier, so we've been in this process for a little over a year. It's typically a two-to-three-year process minimum. This is where we wrote our risk assessment, our standard of cover, and we did our strategic planning, worked through that process. We actually have, a team was assigned to us in August, four fire chiefs from around the country. They've been reviewing our data, have been reviewing all of our documentations. Last week, I think last week, they reached out and said that our documents have been deemed credible for a site visit, which is a big milestone in this process. So October 23rd to the 20- So October 23rd to the 27th, they'll be out here in Boulder City. They're going to come in on that Sunday afternoon. We have to give them a district tour, show them all of our risks. We have a dinner with them that night and then there'll be an in-brief on Monday morning and then interviews from Monday through Wednesday morning. And then Wednesday night, there'll be an out-brief. And that'd be a great opportunity if you're available to come in and listen. And they're going to talk about what they found, what their recommendations are and what ultimately are they going to recommend us to go for accreditation or not? So that's a big, a big thing for us. So we're pretty excited. We've got a really qualified peer team. Like I said, they're digging down through our stuff right now. When they get on site, they're going to take a deeper dive. You know, they'll spend a lot of time looking at what we say we do and making sure. It's called verify and validate. They'll make sure that everything we said is true. And if not, they come up with recommendations. So they're really looking for areas that we can improve. And this cycle just repeats itself every five years. So it, it's a constant improvement model. If we're not getting better, if we're not a little faster, teaching a little better, they continue to nudge you to make you better. So it's, it's a good process. If we're successful, the commission hearings are in Orlando in February 28th through March 3rd. We sit before, it's like a council, but there's 11 commissioners from around the country. They're made up of labor, ICMA, fire chiefs. It's a broad group and they can pepper us with any questions that come to their mind. And we have to be able to answer them as it relates to our department. And if that, once that council's feel, or commission feels like we've, we've reached a certain bar, then they stop and vote. So it's a pretty exciting experience. It can be a little intimidating, but well, if we get that far, we'll be good. As far as our department, I serve as a pure team leader for the, for the organization and will be going to Maguire Air Force Base in November to do the same thing for them. We also have two other peer assessors, Chief Chester and Captain Walton. Captain Walton this summer went to St. Petersburg and served. And Chief Chester will be going to Claremont, Florida. So the nice thing on those trips are the agency that brings you out pays all your expenses. We don't make any money. It's a volunteer thing, but they pay your airfare, your food. It's supposed to not cost you anything. If you, if you can be a wash, it's a win. And then credentialing is important. So professional credentialing is something that we really push in our department. Chief Chester and myself are both credentialed chief fire officers. Chief Walton's working on his fire officer designation. We have one other fire officer and the rest of the captains are, are working on it. So everybody, every officer in our department is going to be required to hold that professional credential. So, and that is another one that every few years they look at and say, hey, what, what are you doing for yourself? Are you going to college? Are you serving in the community? What are you doing to make yourself better? And so it's a nice thing. And then lastly, on this subject, myself and Chief Chester started the Nevada State Accreditation and Credential Consortium last year. So where I came from Colorado, we had a really strong consortium. In fact, Chief Chester from Wyoming would come down to ours. And we decided Nevada needed one, so we started it, which that's the good part. The bad part is when you start something, you get to be in charge. So my year just ended, thank God. And Greg's year, year is now up for, as the coordinator, so I'll be moving into coordinator spot. But we've already engaged, I think, eight or 10 fire departments up in Fallon and Reno and all across the valley. And a lot more people are starting to talk about accreditation. And it'll allow our group to start helping to drive some change in the fire service in Nevada. So that's, our group in Colorado was a really powerful group in that if we needed some change in the fire service, there was a lot of fire chiefs that could speak up. And so we've got, we've got some good, good cooperation. So. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you to you and your staff and all that you do. In particular, I know you mentioned, I think you said there had been like a 21% increase in EMS service calls and I think 25% for another similar thing, but that the average overall, we were looking at 7% increase over, overtime, 16%. Do we know why we're seeing those increases? Is that something to be expected or?
It's normal. Yeah, so where I came from in Colorado, we had 110,000 people. And I was there for 26 years and we had 110,000 people the whole time. We didn't have any kind of growth ordinance. It just, they just didn't grow for some reason. And our call volume went up from when I first got there, about 9,000 calls a year to 24,000 when I left. So it just, people get older, things change, technology changes, you know, I mean. So we see, we, we might see a surge in fires for a little while. In our community specifically, we're, we're double the amount of people over 65. So we can expect, unless that demographic changes, that we'll always see our EMS calls creep up a little bit. The 16% overall, yeah, I don't know. Again, we're going to be able to dig down some more and look, but I, it's, it's interesting. I don't know why it does that sometimes, you know?
No, thank you. I, I appreciate it. And then with regard to the response, right, to a fire, a house is on fire. You know, what, what is it that you would want, right? What is the, the ideal situation? I mean, obviously you have as many guys there as possible. What, what would be the ideal for Boulder City to have with a house fire, a structure fire?
So the, the national standard is 15. Now, what we can do is if we have less than that, is we can alter what we do, right? So if we have a known rescue, if we, if we get there and you can see someone in the top window and they're screaming, we can, we can go inside with less. You're allowed to do that. You know, in fact, that first unit can run inside. It's, it's, there's a federal rule that says who can go in and when, but that one is, you can, you can violate that for a known rescue. So we can do that. If we had 10 onsite, unseen, there's a more we can do. The 15 allows you to do a building search while you're fighting the fire, you're ventilating the building. It, it allows you to coordinate your efforts. The reason that's important is on a fire, if you don't have the ventilation profile set just right and you try to go inside there and disturb it with water, it can burn you or kill you. So it's important to have the, the air turned on at just the right time to, and push the air a certain direction away from the firefighters. Because in a fire, it's 1,000 degrees. Well, even in our fire clothes, we can't go into 1,000 degrees. So we have to try to move that air through the building so we can safely get in there. You know, there's some new tactics that people are trying and we're, we're embracing too, where we start from the outside. We can, anywhere we can access from the outside to start darkening down the fire a little bit, to bring down the temperature a little bit. You know, we do those things, but it really just, it slows down what we can do. I mean, 10 people can get it done, it's going to take longer. And I don't anticipate Henderson's ever going to quit coming. But I will say that in, in visiting with the Henderson Fire Chief, he was very kind. This was about a month ago or two months when we had three calls in a row that were really big. His city manager had a conversation with him and said, hey, we love that you helped them, but you were kind of late on a couple of our calls. So, and so his thing is, you know, we want to help you, but you have to be making little steps to help you. You know, and I know he doesn't make our policies, but he's just saying that we can't continue to send. And they send 16, which is amazing. They're not going to keep, they're not going to do that forever. And it's not a mean thing, they just can't. They're growing, you know, they're adding stations everywhere. Their, their call volumes are going to the roof. So they're there as often as, you know, up to now, they've been there as often we need them. But he was very honest that he even said he'd be happy to come talk before council, if council ever had questions. He had no problem coming and listening with you, but so. And honestly, it's such, I said, such a good relationship. Engine 81 has their Henderson radio and they have a Boulder City radio that they listen to. So they don't even get dispatched before they jump in their truck. As soon as they hear one of the guys on, on Boulder City say, hey, we have a, they know what they're going to do. And they get in the truck and they're already moving down the road. I mean, so it's a great relationship and that station knows, get moving, we'll, we'll dispatch you in a minute. So it is, it's a strong relationship. It's just, and that's, that's what we, that's why we started doing a little bit more hazmat tech rescue. Because our thought is we can't fix the problem before they get there, but we want to be working when they show up. We want to show our goodwill part. You know, same thing with prior to my arrival, the, the previous administration wouldn't take command of the fire. They would let Henderson come and take the command of the fire and run the fire. That's our fire. You know, we have a lot of pride where I came from is it's, it's our building, it's our fire. We're going to be in charge. You can come help us, we love that, but we're not going to, we're not going to retreat when you show up. So.
And you said that there were two calls out also at that same time, which reduced the number that could respond to that fire. What, if, if everybody was able to go, how many would we have been able to have?
So we, seven on duty. And it happened during the workday. So I can go as incident commander. Nigel Walton can go as incident safety officer. And then Chief Chester can come also as another command officer. So we would, we could get 10 there right now, although that, that 10th one is not in a, in one of those designated positions. So it's a bonus to have them. They'll go work, watch the backside, be an extra set of eyes for us, but really nine.
Okay. And then let's say you're in that situation and you've got your nine, 10 people. It's the perfect scenario, but then you get a call out. Then what happens in that situation?
If it's a medical call, we call community ambulance. And community ambulance, from the time we call them is, is like 18 to 25 minutes. It depends on where their ambulance is staged, but they do respond in. They'll come in for us, you know. So the, the problem is if it's somebody's got a broken ankle 25 minutes, it, it's uncomfortable, but you can live that. If somebody's not breathing, that's, that's an eternity and we can't leave the fire. So I mean, but we'll always have that possibility because even if we had 15 people here, if we're at a fire, they'll all be there. You know, or if we're at a box truck wreck like we were at on Mile marker 34, we're all there. You know, so there's still, that's still, that's always a risk of, like I've said before, I think talking to the mayor is the benefit of Boulder City is we're out here on an island. The negative is we're out here on an island, you know, so.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate all the work you do. It's, it's very eye opening to, to hear what, you know, what it is that we're, that we're struggling with and where we're making great improvements. And it's, it's, it's great to see all of that. And I, I thank you very much for, for the direction that we are heading in. So thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I, I just want to say thank you. You know, I, this has been very enlightening and, and it, and it looks like you did bring a lot of structure to this. And this kind of reporting, I think is important to us and I think it's also important to the community. You're talking about the situation in Wyoming, that we, we do communicate, that people understand that they're going to read on social media, something negative and how important it is that, that we are communicating back with the public and showing them in a situation like this, you know, for whoever's watching or reading the minutes or so on, what it took to, to deal with a two, two structure fire. And, and what you can and cannot do with a limited number of people waiting for more people to show up. And I, I just want to say thank you so much because you, you do explain it very well and you do present a very well organized system of dealing with the events that can happen in Boulder City. And so I, I think it's important for people to feel safe. I, I think that safety is a real important part of our living here and, and a presentation like this lets people know that we're doing. Thank you.
And we've added, Chief Chester, working with Lisa LaPlante, has added Facebook, Nextdoor, and I think one other one. I don't do social media, but we have an active social media presence. And so we, we try to push out fire safety information regularly. When, when there are really egregious questions, he'll go in there and, and help correct them and say, hey, this is why we did it. And so we are trying to do that. We also created in this packet, a, a new annual report template that's going to be put on our website. So it was in the, in the information today. It's a 17 page annual report. And obviously it'll get better each year as we do it, but this is our first year at it. So it'll be put on our website after today. We didn't want to put it up until we actually presented it to you. So, and it, it basically talks about a lot of what we talked about, just a little bit more in depth. And so we'll be able to put that to where the public can access it whenever they want.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? You know, thank you, Chief. I, I understand the effort or can see the effort that you've put into things. I think you've been here, what, a little over two years now?
Almost three.
Okay. And as I recall, you arrived just as the pandemic did. Actually, I believe you said you may have brought it with you, but I'm sure you didn't. It was going to get here regardless.
That's true.
But you know, that, that was two years of waiting for vaccines, seeing at least 100 of our residents perish because of it. All of the increased demands that had, your involvement at the county level with the MAC certainly benefited this community. I know that you worked with the veterans home to make sure that whatever we had, they had access to in terms of personal protection equipment, all of that. Vaccines, when they did arrive, you know, unfortunately there were still several residents out there who passed away because of it. It, it's been difficult. They don't call things pandemics unless they're, it's a real problem. So I appreciate all the work you did on that, all the work that all the other firefighters did, the time they put in. You know, I, I know both you and I are aware that because of the model that was implemented here with the firefighters taking such an active role, we got a little bit of pushback from the county on that. But that was okay because, you know, I know I was being told by others that we should open this up to everybody in Clark County. I, I could see the efforts that your department was putting in to service our population here in Boulder City while that type of effort may not have been occurring down in the valley at the beginning. And again, you know, there were many things that everybody learned as we went along with that. There are a couple of issues that I've brought up and I'm, I'm going to direct this more to the city manager. When we talk about these things and when we consider the type of recommendations that have been made, what I believe is necessary is that we have a consistent reporting of numbers. And I do understand that that reporting may not have been as granular in the past as it is now. And certainly that granularity is going to help in understanding things. But as we see these numbers constantly being reported in different formats, I've not been able to get a consistent understanding. The chief just mentioned increases. You know, what I've seen is over time, we have fluctuations up and down. And I think it's important, not only for this council to be able to make decisions, but also for the community to understand the situation that we're in by having a consistent reporting policy. So even if there are new formats that are determined as being important, having something that's consistent that goes back over a period of years is really essential. We're talking about millions of dollars here in public investment and that's going to continue into the future. Because obviously there's going to be additional personnel that will be needed for this. And so far I've yet to see how those additional personnel are going to be paid for. I know there's been mention of a grant program. You know, there's all kinds of grant programs out there. And sometimes they come in and sometimes they don't, and sometimes they end. So that's not really a way to budget for what we know is likely to be millions of dollars in costs in the future. So I, I think that's important that we take consideration of that when we look at these types of things. I would also like to point out that, you know, with all the good work that the chief and Assistant Chief Chester have been doing, we do need to understand that we are that island out there by Lake Mead and that our population is 15,000. I know that the chief has expressed a desire that we would be within the top 1% of all fire departments within the country. I think there needs to be a determination by city staff. Where can we be? Is that reasonable for us to try and get to that point? And at what cost is that going to be? You know, I saw a special report on the 9/11 tragedy that occurred. I believe there were over 250 firefighters in New York that perished that day, that day, as a result of that. That's the largest fire department in the country. And no matter what we do, there's a possibility, as the chief had pointed out, that there's going to be a set of occurrences that we simply cannot prepare for. Should we prepare as best we can? Absolutely. The chief mentioned the fact that, you know, Henderson may get a little bit nervous for the number of calls they make out here. I know I've had a conversation with the mayor of Henderson where all the things that Henderson does to help us that we very much appreciate. But I think sometimes, as I brought up to her, that, you know, we send our folks down to Hoover Dam, down to Lake Mead, down to search flight. We cover a big stretches of US 95 and virtually all of I-11. That's a lot to ask of our community. So I think with that understanding, that's why we have these mutual aid agreements. But that's a conversation that should be occurring, not between the fire department so that they can do as they do and work together as a team. That's something that should be talked about at the senior staff level and the council level so that we do have that knowledge. And again, if there's something that we need to consider in working with Henderson or Clark County or the other entities, then open that conversation. But there is a reason for mutual aid agreements and that's a big part of it. Also, when, you know, this first came up, to have it opened up as our residents are in danger because of the existing facilities that we have, that's a misstatement in my opinion. And what we, what I've seen with the reporting of statistics over the past several months is there were areas that could be improved upon to get that response time down a little bit lower. Congratulations to Dispatch, to the fire department for improving those times. But we have actually been doing things over the years. Prior to Chief Graves' arrival here, we added firefighters. We purchased new equipment. We did those things. arrival here, we added firefighters. We purchased new equipment. We did those things and those were in process to the extent where the ISO rating for the city was recently improved, as I recall. We're now at a fairly normal designation for an ISO rating. I believe we've gone to a two?
No, three.
Three? Okay. So, we went from a four to a three?
I think from a two to a four to a three. It was a two at some point. I'm not sure how they got a two. It's, it had to be a mistake.
Okay. But we were at least improving and not falling further behind. And that was, again, because of the resources that were being devoted. I, I do appreciate the department working to be as professional as they can be, to be as well trained as they can be. But that all comes at a cost and we need to be able to show our residents, here's why we're spending this money, or here's why we don't have that money to spend. So, I, I appreciate what's being done. I appreciate these reports that are being made. But I, I do think we need to get something where staff explains to council, where do we want to be, rather than just constantly saying, well, we'll do this and we'll be better. We'll buy this or we'll build that and we'll be better. Where, what's the target that we're aiming for, I think needs to be explained so that we have an understanding of how we prioritize our budgets and being able to explain to the community, we are safe. We are maybe not as safe as we possibly could be, but this is a safe community and we are working to improve it and have been working to improve it. You know, I, I, I think that we're doing things in the right direction here, but we have to understand that tax dollars are limited and there are demands for those dollars in many different directions. So, I, I hope things work out in the future with all of the additional staffing that's been concerned, requested. You know, one of the points is, within the presentation, it says there may be two or three personnel at this new fire station if it comes about. That's about a half million dollar difference, whether it's two or three personnel, because each additional person is actually three personnel. So, to say two or three, it, it needs a number. It needs to be determined, here's what we're going to do and not say, well, you know, we'll see, we'll see what's going to happen. A, a definite plan is really needed so that budgets can be done, residents can have the proper understanding and expectation. But these things should just not be left up in the air as, well, maybe we'll do this, maybe we'll do that.
Sure, if, if they can. Well, we created a staffing and station plan. It's on our, it's on our website. It's got a five-year plan for what it would cost to do all of the different steps we want to do. I mean, so there is, it's a, there's a ten-year budget, what it would cost for ten years if we added?
And I have looked at it. I'm not sure how many people in the community have, but what I'm getting at, Chief, the point I'm trying to make, is not whether there's a report done, but what specifically is being asked. So, as we do a budget each year, we can say, we're going to do without this so that we can do that. Because there are finite dollars there. It, it's not an unending source of capital. And, you know, we happen to be in a situation that's going to last for a few years with additional funds coming into the city, city. But that doesn't last forever. And again, my point is, that's great, but when I see a report that says, well, maybe we'll do this or maybe we'll do that, there should be a reason we do things. And to say, well, we'll see how it works out, that's what I'm getting at. We need a definitive answer.
And the definitive answer is we need to be within four minutes travel time of every home.
Well, I understand the guidelines, but I also understand there are no, I'm not here to argue with you, Chief, okay? I also understand there are no communities in the United States that are able to meet those guidelines in every given situation. So, again, we can't possibly prepare for every single emergency that may encounter here. We can try hard to make sure that for the majority of foreseeable incidents, we are prepared, but we're not going to meet every guideline ever. That, that's just the reality of guidelines and that's why they're guidelines.
And Mr. Mayor, just to clarify one point. So, the two or three positions mentioned in his presentation are actually existing positions that would move from the, the current station to the new station?
Well, once again, that, that's not always been clear. When this was originally proposed, is that there would be additional personnel and there would be grant dollars sought in order to provide for those additional personnel.
Right. There, right now, we have no plans for additional personnel. It's not budgeted for and?
Well, again, that's the first I'm hearing it, that we're not adding personnel. Because that's been the discussion all along, is that there would be personnel added. And I, I would point out that, you know, again, prior to either of you coming here to Boulder City, we did put the department back to the pre-recession levels that it had been cut down to. We did increase the personnel. So, you know, I, I think that we're cognizant of that, but we need the facts and we need them presented in a consistent manner so that those evaluations can be made.
Well, I'm happy to meet with any member of council at any time to go over what you want and I'll put that together. Like I said, I'm, I'm happy to put us a sync report together. Just let me know what you want and I will happily do that because I think it's critical that we address the public safety. I'm not trying to be the best department in the world. I'm trying to be a safe department in our city, across the city. So?
And I understand that, Chief. And again, I'm not here trying to argue with you about these things. What I'm saying is, we need to set expectations of where we want to be and, and not say, we're, we're going to hit every one of these guidelines, because that's not possible. That, that's just not the reality for any city to be able to do that. I do appreciate the work you're doing. I appreciate the cohesiveness that I see in a plan that is being put together. We just need to make sure that we all understand it and we all set something as a reasonable goal that a city of fifteen thousand can be expected to attain. Anyone else? And thank you very much for the presentation. It's much appreciated, as well as the other work you've been doing.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seven is introduction of bill number nineteen nineteen. I will introduce bill number nineteen nineteen, wave reading except for title.
Thank you. Introduction of bill number nineteen nineteen, an ordinance of the city council of Boulder City, Nevada, amending the zoning map to rezone nine twenty Villa Grande Way from C-one neighborhood commercial to R-one-ten single-family residential, AM twenty-two dash three-five-eight. And this item will be considered at the September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting.
Thank you. Item number eight, introduction of bill number nineteen twenty. I will go ahead as well, move for introduction of bill nineteen twenty, wave reading except for title.
Introduction of bill number nineteen twenty, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, Nevada, approving agreement number twenty-two dash one-nine-nine-three to authorize the conveyance of real property consisting of point nine zero acres located at six fifty-one Adams Boulevard from the city of Boulder City to the Boulder City Library District for a public purpose at no cost. Bill number nineteen twenty will be considered at the September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting.
Thank you. Item number nine, for possible action, consideration of bill number nineteen eighteen. Mr. City Manager?
Yes. This item is a lease for the development of the Railroad Museum facility and our finance director, Diane Pelletier, will brief you on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I haven't been here since you have your new setup. Looks really nice. So, item number nine is for possible action. It's consideration of bill number nineteen eighteen, approving agreement number twenty-two dash nineteen ninety-one, a land lease between the city of Boulder City and the state of Nevada for point nine four acres located at the northwest corner of the Boulder City Parkway and Business Route ninety-three, also known as Truck Route, to be used for the development of a railroad museum facility. So, a little overview, Boulder City and the state of Nevada, division of state lands entered into a joint land use agreement in June of two thousand and eighteen to coordinate the development of the future state railroad museum facility, agreement number eighteen dash seventeen seventy-seven. The agreement provided for a future lease of city-owned land for use for the new museum facility at such time the state was ready. The city and state have been working together to finalize the lease agreement and the lease rate is zero dollars for a ninety-nine year term. And with that, I will try to answer any questions you, you may have. If I can't answer them, Brock Armant Trout can.
And we also have the director of the museum here. Any questions or comments? I, I would just like to address the fact that I, I think this project is, is exceptional for Boulder City. You know, we often see the city provide land for different projects. The expansion of the Southern Nevada Railroad Museum, I think is going to be tremendous for this city. And I will be happy to move for approval of bill number nineteen eighteen.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ms. Pelletier, thank you. Thanks to you and, and all the friends of the museum out there. Item number ten, for possible action, resolution seventy-five thirteen. This is an item that I had requested to be included. During the pandemic, we had emergency directives issued that limited in-person attendance at our meetings. Thanks to the work of staff, we were able to put together an AV system. Holly, thanks to you for all your help in doing that. And Ms. LaPlante, I think she's left the room, but, you know, it was a scramble. And part of that was, how do we get public comment? With that, it was developed that we would allow for call-in as well as email. And the in-person restrictions have now been removed. We've been meeting for some time. We've continued with the call-in opportunities and email comments. I believe that's worked out to the benefit of the public. Folks that can't be here in person are able to either submit an email ahead of time or call in during the meeting. And I think it's important that we pass a resolution that says, we will continue to accept public comment that way. I know there are other bodies that have gone back to only in-person comments, but I believe the volume that we've seen for particular issues certainly indicates that the community appreciates that effort to have their voices heard and that we should continue with that procedure. Any other questions or comments regarding that? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just add that I think the, the point of accessibility is, I think, the most important feature here is that there are those who cannot be in attendance for whatever that reason may be, but still want to be able to have their voices heard. So, I, I think this is absolutely an appropriate policy for us to be taking. As you've, as you've said, it's been a very popular method for us to, to receive public comment. So, it is working and I think that that, you know, we do a better job up here when we hear from our citizens directly. So, I think this is, this is a great direction for us to head in.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? And I did speak with Madam City Clerk about this while engaging in the reading of an hour or more of emails for some issues. Takes some time. I know the deputy city clerk at one point actually videotaped the reading of those because she needed two sessions to get through all of them. I do understand it is an additional demand on our staff. I do understand that it may lead to longer council meetings, but I believe that the community has shown preference for doing that and an opportunity for their voices to be heard. So, I'll move for approval of resolution seventy-five thirteen.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. And speaking of public comment, that brings us to our final public comment period. Comment during this period may be on any issue. Speakers will have up to five minutes to speak. As always, we ask that you be civil and concise. Is there anyone present who would like to speak? Again, if you would just state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Chris Diley. I thought I'd be speaking to a captive audience, but it's empty. There's nobody here, just you guys. So, now you get, you get stuck with me. But this is important. I think it's a public safety issue and it, as it relates to the Boulder City residents, if they're planning to recreate in the state of Nevada, if they happen to go online and they, and they read the information by the Nevada Parks and Wildlife regarding bear attacks, something, you know, not, not always considered particularly here, but there, last year, there was an attack in Durango, Colorado. A woman was killed and Tonto National Forest has had numerous attacks, black bear attacks, where people were killed or one man had his scalp removed. And then a woman was killed over near Sholo. And I'll just be very quick and brief. Well, what I did was I had my letter, it was published just recently, about two weeks ago, up in Anchorage Daily News. I, I lived in Anchorage for about eighteen years. My brother was a swim coach at the University of Alaska Anchorage up there. And when I returned up there, my friend Keith Bender and I went fishing along the Kenai River and we were attacked by a brown bear. As we were finishing our fishing, we were leaving and we were attacked by a brown bear. And I used bear spray. I had it and everything was done ideally and it, it didn't stop the bear. The bear knocked me down. It was waving its paw at my head and growling in my face and all I had left was the spray. After I had sprayed it in the charge, I just had the can and I was spraying the rest of it into its mouth and its throat. That's the only target I had because its eyes were way up here. So, I just sprayed the whole can into its mouth and throat. And the bear ran away and I jumped up. I should have stayed down, but I jumped up. And as soon as I jumped up, it peeked over its shoulder and it, it saw me. So, it did a U-turn and charged again. And I yelled back to my friend Keith. I said, it's charging again. It's coming again. So, I, I just turned my back to it because I didn't want to see it kill me. And when I turned my back, I thought it was going to get me in the neck, but it went around me and knocked my friend Keith against a tree. And then it took off for good at that point. But I, I think what happened was that it was, the bear was realizing the spray's effect on that second charge. So, I think the bear spray was effective ultimately. But what the bear spray did was allow that face-to-face encounter where if that bear wanted to kill me, I wouldn't be alive today. When that bear was threatening to ki, when it knocked me down, I wasn't using its claws because it didn't rip my clothes or anything. It just wanted to assert domination because it was eating a salmon when we came up on it. And it was like a dog protecting its dog bowl, like, hey, this is my food, you know, get out of here. So, it was just trying to make a point. But if it wanted to kill me, I wouldn't be alive trying to rely on bear spray. And so, I'll just conclude by pointing out that the, well, what we have is, I was going to put this up on the screen for, there's a very interesting juxtaposition of both my letter, if you compare that with the, the information that's provided by the national, or by the Nevada Wildlife, Parks and Wildlife, what they have is a statistical analysis by Tom Smith and Stephen Herrero. And it's, it's entitled, efficacy of bear deterrent spray in Alaska. And it concludes by pointing, it's a statistical analysis. It says, bear spray represents an effective alternative to lethal force and should be considered, et cetera, et cetera. But that's the information that they give people to use is to rely on bear spray. And I'm like, statistically, it's very convincing. But when you look at the issue pragmatically, you know, and you look at how I went face-to-face with a bear and could have been killed, I mean, you look at it realistically and pragmatically, it's not enough. Bear spray is not enough. So, in my letter, I, my point is, my public safety point is that what we need is a more effective, non-lethal means of defense. Because the non-lethal defenses is great. It's ideally, that's the best thing for coexistence with wildlife, you know, so that people aren't unnecessarily killing bears. And we can find a way to live with bears. Because a lot of the times, you really have good behavior. The bears are really on good behavior. Because I've had numerous times with them when they, they don't show any aggression. And, and I love animals. So, I, I love, I would love to see if we could come up with something a, a more effective, non-lethal means of defense. So, that's my, my public safety message that I share. And, and so, I appreciate you guys letting me share. I'm homeless myself and I've been homeless- I'm homeless myself, and I've been homeless a long time. So, this is meaningful to me, to be, to do something, I think, that can be helpful and useful for consideration. So, I've provided the copies with the City Council members. And again, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to speak? All right, we will take anyone wishing to call in at this time?
Chief, I have another question. Has the, has there been a resolution to the agenda of number three?
We're on the final public comment.
Because I've been listening all night, but I haven't heard anything about it, to be honest with you.
The item was on our consent agenda, so there was no discussion of that item. If you do have comment that you'd like to offer about it, please do so. Not on the line anymore. All right. Hopefully, we'll call back if you'd like to make comment on that item. Anyone else wishing to call in? The phone number is 702-589-9629.
Public comment?
Ah, yes, sorry, we got disconnected. So, the reason for my call, I just wanted to comment on it.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Miguel Gutierrez.
How do you spell your last name?
Gutierrez, that's spelled G-U-T-I-E-R-R-E-Z.
Okay, go ahead.
So, regarding that issue, it was stated that our bid was deemed non-responsive. I'm calling with my underground as well. Our deemed, was deemed non-responsive due to the fact that our preference bid affidavit was, we copied and pasted signatures, which is not accurate, which is false. What happened was that that form, according to Nevada revised statutes, is valid for up to one year when signed and verified by CPA and also notarized, because they actually use, they actually use receipts. And on that form, it states that to use receipts for when, that fiscal year or so. That form can be valid for up to one year, and we had that form valid, signed in May of this year for a different project, and we use the same form for the EBC Park Sewer, as well as miscellaneous pipeline, water, excuse me, water replacements. Now, I don't know why someone's stating that we're copying and pasting signatures, because that's not accurate. And due to that reason, our bid was deemed non-responsive. Basically, you know, it's, I think it's unfair, it's inaccurate. According to Nevada revised statute, it's, it says something different that, you know what I mean? That we can use that same form over for one year. But I guess some people just, they know, because they, that's how they see, how do I say it? That's how they see that, that's how they're, according to their interpretation. So, I mean, I just wanted to comment on that. Hopefully, we can resolve this issue. Hopefully, there can be a change into what's going on. Hopefully, it's something that can be resolved with us, but I'm not sure. So, and that's all.
Thank you. This is our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to call? The number is 702-589-9629. This is the final public comment period. Anyone wishing to call in? The phone line is available. The number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, whether you'd mention there was an email or more?
Yes, I have two emails.
Please go ahead.
The first written comment was submitted by Andre Haynes. Commander Andre Haynes, founder and CEO of the Armed Forces Chamber, Nevada's largest and oldest chamber of commerce formed to serve armed forces members, proudly presents the Armed Forces Chamber's Resource Partner Presentation, sponsored by Patsy Brown. The Armed Forces Chamber's Resource Partner Presentation occurs on Wednesday, September 21, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The Armed Forces Chamber's Resource Partner Presentation is open to the public and free to attend. Partners include Boulder City Library. Supporters include Montford Point Marine Association, Captain Eddie Hicks, Chapter Number 46, Nevada Commission on Minority Affairs, Nevada Women's Business Center, and Patsy Brown. For information about the Armed Forces Chamber's Resource Partners Presentation, visit armedforceschamber.com. Thanks, Armed Forces Chamber. The next written public comment was submitted by Ryan Wheeler. "I am seeking your help with the National Park Service issue. To preface my comments, please imagine for a minute how a resident of Boulder City would feel if he could not reach his elected officials or there was no public venue to discuss critical items about the city. If you can imagine that, you can understand how I feel. The Lake Mead National Recreation Area administered by National Park Service does not have such a venue. They simply make decisions and are not accountable to those they serve. So, I seek your assistance, knowing that as elected officials, you may know someone at NPS. You may have their cell phone numbers and can have conversation with them. If you do, please ask them why they are not following their 2018 General Management Plan for low water level for receding water at Lake Mead. In spring of 2022, NPS shut down the marinas of Temple Bar, Colville Bay, and Echo Bay and forced those that use these marinas to travel to Hemman Way Harbor for the only singular access on America's largest reservoir. The lake has more than 750 miles of shoreline with a topographical landscape that is difficult to travel alongside. For some, this adds hours of travel time, additional fuel, and loss of revenue to smaller towns where access typically exists. You may recall the news after Memorial Day that there was more than a four-hour wait time to put your boat in or remove it from Hemman Way Harbor. Is this what NPS desires to promote within a state and county that is known for being to its local attractions and businesses? Additionally, hundreds, if not thousands, are now traveling out of state to Lake Mojave, Lake Havasu, and elsewhere, taking business that would occur in Nevada out of the Silver State. One of the most befuddling items about the NPS is in 2018, they published their plan for the lakes, exact scenario of receding waters at Lake Mead, and they simply are not executing the plan. The plan is called the General Management Plan Amendment, Low Water Plan Environmental Assessment 2018. It can be found, and he references a website. Within that plan, NPS identifies the purpose and need of the plan is to provide a long-term strategy for addressing operational needs to maintain lake access at lake elevations above 950 feet. The elevation of Lake Mead today is 1,044.26 feet. So, this plan was developed to provide boaters access to Lake Mead to water elevation that is 94.26 feet lower than the current water elevation. The purpose and need statement further identifies the plan is to maintain overall opportunities for visitors to access the lake, even if some facilities may change. The plan identifies the preferred alternative is to maintain access at the marinas of Temple Bar, Hemman Way Harbor, Colville Bay, and Echo Bay to an elevation of 950 feet. It further provides civil engineering drawings of each of these marinas that detail exact locations of how access will be maintained during the time of receding water elevations. Each marina has several drawings of how to relocate boat ramps, boat launches, docks, utilities, and breakwaters for a Lake Mead water elevation of 1,050 feet, 1,000 feet, and 950 feet. So, next time you speak with NPS, please just ask them one question. Why is NPS, Lake Mead National Recreation Area, not executing their 2018 General Low Water Plan by keeping the marinas open and providing access to the public as stated in the purpose and need of that plan? A great follow-up question is, when will National Park Service execute the plan and open the marinas stated in the preferred alternative of that plan? Please help the people that NPS will not listen or engage with.
Thank you. All right, seeing no others, we will close the final public comment period and move to City Council reports. Councilmember Adams?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Fox?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, this is just another reminder that emergency aid of Boulder City continues to be able to assist residents who are facing an emergency with their rent and/or utilities, and in addition, has a fully stocked pantry for those needing assistance with food. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I was at a meeting this morning of the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority. Overall, a report given on tourism in Southern Nevada is pretty positive. The visitor volume increased 31% from last year. However, it's still down by about 11% prior to the pandemic. The gross gaming revenue in Clark County is 22% above the pre-pandemic level. So, although there are fewer people here, they're gambling more money. The tourism as a whole in Southern Nevada recovered much more quickly than the rest of the country. The target in Clark County is for 89% occupancy. It is approaching that now, whereas the rest of the country is somewhere around, I believe, 76% occupancy. And they, the rest of the country is averaging less than that. So, I believe a lot of that is the credit of the hard work of the LVCVA and all the other properties in Las Vegas to get folks to come here, make it attractive for them with the different events. Convention attendance next year is projected to increase from 1.2 million to 1.7 million. So, that's all good economic news for Clark County, which benefits Boulder City as well. One other note, school is back in session. I've gotten a couple of complaints of seeing folks speeding in the school zones. Please don't do that. The kids aren't as attentive to the traffic going by at increased speeds. So, take it easy when you're in the school zones. With that, I want to thank staff, and we are adjourned.